7:00 PM, Monday, February 18, 2019. Called a regular meeting of the Waverly City Council order. Roll call, please.
Bergen.
Here.
Dranko.
Here.
Cangis.
Here.
Kenzie.
Here.
Rothie.
Here.
Sharon.
President.
Wallstein.
Here.
And we'll welcome back our guest councilperson, Jess Kettleson.
Hi, everybody.
We didn't scare you out?
Nope, that's what I was saying. Takes a lot more than that.
Welcome to everyone that's in our... here as visitors and will move along and hopefully get you involved in some way, shape, or form. But entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Approval of the agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Agenda is approved as presented. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January 21, 2019, regular meeting minutes, January 26, 2019, budget work session, work-study session minutes, the January 28, 2019, regular meeting minutes, and the February 4, 2019, regular meeting minutes. So there's a lot of minutes to approve.
I'll move approval of all of the minutes that were enumerated by the mayor.
Your second.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the minutes from January 21, 2019, through February 4, 2019. Any discussion?
I just had one addition. I asked Val to add Cindy Campbell's name as someone who came and presented at the January 26 meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor of approval of the minutes say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Approval of the minutes is taken care of. Next item was to be a presentation of a plaque of appreciation to former Electric Utilities Board member Jerry Viberberg. Appreciate word this morning that due to the weather, he has a son in Dubuque or Davenport that he had Dubuque, that he had to go pick up tonight. So he said that just acknowledged the fact that he served several years, was chairman of the board when I came on as mayor, but had some conflicts with his scheduling and resigned November, I believe it was. And so appreciate all of the work that Jerry put into the utilities board, all of...
Bob Brocker's here.
And Bob Buckingham is here now as chair of the board. So sorry to disappoint you, Bob, that Jerry's not here.
There you go.
Yeah. Okay. Move on. This is a public hearing. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing for the Cedar Lane Reconstruction 2019 project, plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost. We'll open the public hearing to anyone that has comments to this project. Been in the mail for, I thought, early 2000s. Mike Cherry, the engineer, said this morning he thought it was 1998 that first surfaced as a project. Yes, John?
My name's John Campbell. Reside at 1001 10th Avenue Southwest. I'd just like to thank the council and city staff for at least getting onto this project. As you well stated, it's been in the planning for quite some time. I also hoped that from my understanding of the present contract, that the preservation of a lot of trees along the river are going to be continued. That's an absolute must. As a property owner and a longtime resident of Waverly, we don't have an asset that is any better than the river going through our community. A lot of effort has been put into it, not only by the city, but in by the individuals who own property on the river or adjacent to it, and by a lot of people who just enjoy the river. So the project is well needed with some other projects that are coming up. It's an essence that it be completed. I just hope that everything that is, as I saw it in the previous plans, is going to be adhered to and that any adjustment, working with property owners along that corridor, be taken in consideration. Once again, I thank you.
Very good. Thank you, John, for your comments. Anyone else have comments, questions about the Cedar Lane project from Brown Lane on the north end to Second Avenue Northeast, right outside this building almost?
Yeah, I do. Rick Page?
Could you step up to the microphone, please?
I was just wondering how we're gonna keep the speed limit down in Cedar Lane. You know, it's gonna be more like a highway, and it's already become a bad shortcut already, you know? Everybody cutting through there from, instead of going down the main drag. But I was wondering if you could put speed bumps in front of my house or something to moderate the speed limit.
Okay.
That's basically all. You know, I have my grandkids up there sometimes at the house when we go fishing and stuff.
I think I've gotten some emails from you in the past about that.
Yeah, I've called them a couple times.
Yep.
That's basically all I wanted.
Very good. Thank you.
It is a good project.
Turn that over to police chief and city engineer to see what we can do about enforcing some speed limits along that corridor.
I assume the speed limit is 25 on there, is it not?
It is. I think the question, though, has more to do with...
Enforcement. Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you to those that made some comments for entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 19-15, approving plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate cost of $981,154 for the Cedar Lane Reconstruction 2019 project.
Second.
Motion made in second. Council, discussion?
Can I get a little clarification? It looked like there was some storm sewer listed in there. Is this just at the south end where it connects up to the existing storm sewer?
North end with Brown Lane.
So there's storm sewer at the north end with Brown Lane?
At that intersection, yes.
I'm not exactly sure to which plans John Campbell was referring, but Mike, do you know and are they the same? Can we confirm that or what the plans are for the trees?
Yeah, there's only one tree that's going to be taken out. Otherwise, the intent is to preserve the trees along the corridor. We know that that has a couple of benefits. One, it kind of helps secure and stabilize the bank, but also is on the west side of the road and helps provide shade for those that are out enjoying the lane, walking.
And what about on the other side of the road?
It's a power line, so there aren't... again, there really is no tree clearing on this project.
Okay, thanks.
If you drive it, you'll see that one tree. Pinches everything. You'll know which one it is.
I walk there a lot. I know what it is, yeah.
Brings up one question that I have, and as was mentioned, this project's been in the works for well before I've been on the council. And I was looking at the material that I have. I assume this is the latest material. I'm... you know, the... that road obviously has a lot of people that are walking on it and bicycling and all of that. Is there some kind of consideration for that in these plans? I mean, will there be a shoulder or something that people can be walking on?
For about half the project, there's an actual paved shoulder, so...
My AV tech.
Okay, what I have up is the section by the ski club. And things I want to point out here is back in, I think it was about 2009, we did, we did shoulder widening on, well, I refer to as the inland side, the east side here. And that's where we widened it and then we put down milled asphalt as a base here, base. So on the riverside, the edge of the pavement is going to continue to be the edge of the new pavement. But along this corridor here, because it is flat, we're going to keep it a rural section to support the drainage coming off the roadway. So the top part here shows that we're going to have 10-foot driving lanes and 5-foot paved shoulders. Now, 10-foot sounds like it's fairly narrow, and it is, but that's about what we have today. The actual paved section of the roadway is between 18 and 20 feet wide today. That's what we have. So we're actually going to shift the driving lanes a little bit towards the power lines because that existing edge will become a 5-foot paved shoulder in there. When we get to the north end, the corridor narrows and it becomes a little more challenging that we're... we have a pretty good drop down to the river and then we're cut into like, more of like a cliff-type embankment. And so we don't have enough space to do the 5-foot paved shoulders, but we do have enough topography here that we can add curb and gutter, and it will provide the drainage more like a typical street does. We'll take it down to the low spots and have like intakes for the water to get out. But what we're going to do here is with the curb and gutter, we're going to backfill behind it and we'll have a little bit of a refuge or a flat area, so somewhere in the neighborhood of three feet that, let's say you're walking your dog and you got a couple vehicles coming, at least you can step up out of the street and have a little bit of a refuse, refuge there. The curb effectively functions as our barrier rail. We did consider putting guard rail, cable rail, or even a concrete barrier, but in doing so, the pedestrians would have no way to readily step out of the way of conflicts with vehicles. So we saw this as kind of our best option in this location here.
Okay.
Thanks.
So that part, the, what you're calling the urban section, the people will still need to actually be walking in the street.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah, which makes it even more important that the speed limit be enforced because once the street is fixed and it's a very nice street, people are going to tend to go even faster than they do now. They go very fast now.
Well, we try to build a good durable road that's also smooth, and so, yes. Again, by, this is going to be a full-depth concrete pavement. So again, 10-foot driving lanes, hopefully, you know, that kind of encourages people to maybe slow down a little bit. But, you know, it certainly could become, I guess, you know, maybe even more of an issue than it is today. And that's something that we're aware of.
So Mike, is there any merit to the suggestion that there be speed bumps on the sort? I'm not sure I'd recommend that, but I hear that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not a supporter of them. You think of more of like a speed table or something to that effect, and where they typically have those are at pedestrian crossings and that the pedestrian crossing is on top of the speed table, and that kind of forces people to slow down in that specific location. I'm not supportive of that, of putting, you know, in fact, obstructions up. If they're properly designed, actually, if you take them at faster speed, then you tend to float over them. So again, it's just not something I, as your city engineer, would recommend.
Any other questions for Mike?
I don't have any for Mike, but I... unless somebody else does. But I just was going to ask James, could you give us an update on your continued work on the budget and our conversations at different points in time of budget discussion included this project and whether anything's changed in your estimation about, you know, this is the dilemma that I forget who brought it up before, was Dan or somebody else? But, you know, with approving these projects before we have the budget approved is always just a little... yeah, especially when they're in these large amounts.
Sure. I know in the past, we'd looked at doing this in January before we'd even met, and so we kind of backed that off to where you've gone through the budget process before we actually came to the hearing. So I think that helps from a familiarity standpoint of what we do and don't have included. So this first phase is included in the amount of money we're going to borrow. It's well within what we had. When we reset the levies after the last budget session, you'll see when we get to that point of setting the hearing and the consent, that it dropped to 1437 instead of 1470 it was almost at when we started. So that was substantial to be actually less than last year by seven days since on the levy itself. So looking forward, and I have gone through, and I've got about a four- to five-year plan I'll hand out to you tonight about what it looks like going forward, possible funding projects, and we're well within what we can do as a city. So I don't have any concern with the amount of money this is looking at. The bids came in within what we had budgeted to bond, so all in all, this is a solid project going forward financially, and we have a little room if need be, in case we do run into some trouble, but we should be in good shape.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
And I just had a question. Have we used this contractor before, Mike? Is this someone we're familiar with on other projects?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, comments about the plan specifications, form of contract? Roll call vote, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Dranko.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Kenzie.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Resolution 1915, approving plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Cedar Lane Reconstruction Project 2019 is approved. A companion action with that is Resolution 1916, awarding contract for the Cedar Lane, awarding the contract for the Cedar Lane Reconstruction 2019 project. Entertain a motion.
Move Resolution 1916, awarding contract for the Cedar Lane Reconstruction 2019 project to Kate Cunningham Construction Company, Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, for the bid amount of $838,114.04.
Second.
Motion made in second. Council, discussion?
Again, I'd just like to kind of echo Edie's comments. I appreciate the fact that we did delay letting this until we had the chance to go through budgets because, again, it's, as we know, budgets are always tight and have things forced on us because we've let the bids already and things like that. I think it's a bad position to put ourselves in, so... Based on the bid amounts here, I don't think it hurt us a whole lot to wait a couple extra weeks to have a bid.
Absolutely not. I think it was a very tight bidding pattern in general, and we had a number of bids that were well within what we had hoped. And it even leaves a little bit for contingency, maybe 4%, 5% to have just in case because you just don't know in some of these projects what you're going to get into. So I'm very comfortable with the bid. I think it was a great bid from Cunningham, and I just look forward to get started.
Any comments, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dranko.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Kenzie.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Resolution 1916, awarding contract for Cedar Lane Reconstruction to Kate Cunningham Construction Company Incorporated of Cedar Falls, Iowa, is approved. Next item on the agenda will cause a little buzz around the community.
(laughing).
Oh, I worked on that a long time. But Governor Reynolds has made a proclamation to pertain to the honeybees in the state of Iowa. They are a very important part of our ecological system and the foods that we eat every day. Without them, we would be in severe problems. Proclamation goes as such. Whereas honeybees and native insects are important as pollinators for a third of the food we eat, and honeybees are vital in production of over 90 crops grown across the nation, many of which are in Iowa. Honeybees contribute to a healthy Iowa environment by assuring availability of fruits, vegetables, nuts, and flowers for wildlife in all Iowans. Whereas Iowa's 45,000 or more honeybee hives produce about 4 million pounds of honey valued at over $8 million, and honeybees provide an estimated $92 million economic, $92 million in economic value to Iowa crops from their pollination. Whereas Iowa has over 4,500 beekeepers representing hobbyists, side liners as part-time businesses, and full-time commercial beekeepers. Hobby beekeepers have as few as one hive to commercial operations with thousands of hives. Whereas traditionally, beekeeping occurred in rural areas of Iowa, now beekeeping increasingly occurs in urban areas with the rising interest of hobby beekeepers for keeping bee hives in Iowa cities and towns. Whereas the state of Iowa has an active apiary program, inspection program, protect honeybees and beekeepers from introduction and spread of apiary diseases and pests, whereas honeybees face serious threats from invasive pests, decreasing bee-friendly forage, variable climate, and increasing pesticide and herbicide pressure. Therefore, I, Kim Reynolds, governor of the state of Iowa, do hereby proclaim February 27, 2019, as Iowa Honeybee Day, and encourage all citizens, residents, and visitors to join in observing this day and focusing on the importance of honeybees to our state economy, to enjoy the honey and other project of honeybees, to recognize the honeybee's role in maintaining our Iowa environment, and to assist in reducing the threats to honeybee survival in our state. And I read some figures somewhere after that, that it's not unusual for a honeybee to fly several miles to pick up a little bit of pollen. And I don't know how many trips it took to just make a little bit, but it was pretty amazing that was going on. Next item is public comments for any item that's not on the agenda. Is there anyone here?
Do we need to add it on the proclamation?
Yes, if you'd like to vote on that proclamation.
I would move the proclamation on Iowa Honeybee Day as read by the mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Proclamation is approved. Thank you. Now, public comments for any item that's not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to consent calendar. Following items will be acted upon by voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Number one, set public hearing date to review the budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020 for March 4, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall. Set public hearing date to review the Waverly Senior Living Project 2019, plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for March 18, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall. Pay request from WHKS and Company for the Adams Parkway Bridge and Horton Road repairs 2019 for the amount of $2,819.30. Pay request from AHTS Architects for the Waverly Senior Housing 420 Building Project for the amount of $30,340.95 to be paid by Waverly Senior Housing. Pay request from McClure Engineering Company for the Airport Runway 29 Extension 2018 for the amount of $4,278.60. Pay request from VJ Engineering for the Cedar Lane Reconstruction 2019 for the amount of $750. Pay request from VJ Engineering for the water main replacement 2019 for the amount of $4,647.50. Pay request from Chicago Central and Pacific for the 20th Street Northwest Reconstruction Railroad Crossing Improvements at 20th Street Northwest 2018 for the amount of $73,624.87. Pay request from AHTS Architects for the South Riverside Park Master Plan in the amount of $1,000. Class C liquor license for Applebee's Neighborhood Bar and Grill. Class C beer permit for Quick Star number 707. Change of ownership for Quick Star number 707. Change of ownership for Quick Star 752. Change of ownership for Quick Star number 286. Class C liquor license for Waverly Golf and Country Club. Change of ownership for Waverly Golf and Country Club and the cash dispersments for January 2019. Entertain a motion.
I would be happy to move the consent calendar as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Consent calendar is approved. Regular business, review of fiscal year 2018 of Waverly Audit by Chad Premier from Williamson Company, B.C. Welcome. Give us your finest.
I'll do my best. So I think all of you have a copy of the FY18 financial statements, and I guess we'll just kind of go through them. First page I want to point out is page six, that the city participates in the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by the GFOA. That's the Government Finance Officers Association. You guys have gotten this certificate for many years. I've worked for Williamson Company for eight years, I believe, and I've been on this audit every year. And I know every year you've gotten this certificate, and I think for many years prior to that as well. And part of getting this certificate is including many, like, different financial statistics, which are in the back, and, you know, those take a lot of time, and so I wanted to, you know, thank Jennifer over there for kind of gathering all the information up for this because it does take additional time to put a report this size together. Next page, page eight, this is the auditor's report, the opinion report. First thing I want to point out is, is the auditor's responsibility in there. We reference the auditors for the hospital and Waverly Utilities, so they are considered a component unit, so they're essentially part of the city, and so we include that information in the city's audit report, and we reference... an unmodified opinion. About halfway in that paragraph, we say that we conducted our audit in accordance with audit standards generally accepted in the United States of America, and the standards applicable to financial audits contained in the government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. And so those are the, they set the requirements of how, of the standards that we have to audit by. The next page, page nine, the opinions paragraph, we say, "In our opinion, based on our audit and the reports of other auditors, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects." So that is the clean opinion, the unmodified opinion that you guys Next few pages, start on page eleven, is management discussion and analysis. That this is just basically management's opportunity to describe what happened, and comparative information from FY18 and FY17. And so this report is a hundred and, I think, thirty-some pages. If you don't have time to read all those pages, management discussion analysis is a good spot to read and kind of focus on. And starting on page twenty-one, twenty-one, and twenty-two and twenty-three, these are the, what we call the government-wide financial statements. Really, no management decisions can be based on these reports, but this is turning all the fund, financial statements into a full accrual basis of accounting, more like a, like the business type of accounting. And so basically, if you, you know, want to compare, you know, cities about the same size as Waverly, this would be a good, good statement to compare those different, different cities. Page twenty-four is the governmental fund financial statements, and these are the major funds. And then the second last column is other governmental funds. So every fund of the city is shown somewhere in this report. These are either the largest funds or the ones that have been deemed the most important funds. And so they're shown in front, but all the other funds of the city are shown further in the back as other supplemental information. One thing that we always like to point out is regarding the general fund, how many days of unassigned fund balance you have at June thirty? So what that means is if you did not receive any revenue after June thirty, how many days in fund balance do you have to finance operations? And at June thirty, twenty eighteen, you had two hundred and ten days, which is a good number. It's one of the highest that I've seen that, because if you think about it, that you want to at least get to, you know, roughly one hundred and twenty days, because you, that's what, you know, get your property tax revenue in October. So if you want to be able to, you know, finance from, from June thirty to October, and you guys exceed that, so that's very good. Next page, start on page thirty-eight. It's just the notes to the financial statements. So these are very detailed notes that basically just help explain the different numbers on the, on the financial statements. Really, you know, it's a good read, but, but you can kind of flip through that. One thing I want to note to you is on page seventy-two, that one of the biggest things this year was that there was a new standard relating to other post-employment benefits. What that is, is the ability, or having to allow retirees on the, on the city's health insurance after they retire up through Medicare age. And there was a different way of calculating that liability. And all it is, is just an actuarial calculated liability. It's not a liability that you're going to be able to cut a check to or anything. But on page seventy-two, the exact same liability, you can see that the old way of calculating it, it was two hundred and forty-two thousand, and the exact, nothing changed, but it was just a different, different way of calculating it. The standards told us that we had to calculate it a different way, and then that liability grew to six hundred and twenty thousand. It's not a big deal. It's, you know, like I said, nothing that, that the city's going to cut a check for or anything like that. It's just, just basically somebody told you, you had to calculate it a different way, and then it just grew bigger.
I have a question about that, though, if I could.
Yes.
I mean, so is, I mean, is, what's the reason for it? I mean, one would assume that if they're asking us to calculate it a different way, it's a better indicator of liability?
Like I said, it's all actuarial based, so there's a bunch of different assumptions that go into it. I can, because then if you back up a little bit to page sixty-nine, that there's some analysis that basically, if you change some assumptions, what it does to that liability. And so halfway down the page there, that it's using a five percent discount rate. And so then, basically, if it was determined that a six percent discount rate should be used, it would grow to about nine hundred thousand. If a four percent, it would decrease to seven hundred and twelve. And then also above that, it's talking about, oh, excuse me, that was the healthcare cost trend rate. Up above that was the discount rate. And so it's, yeah, it's probably, it might be more, more accurate, because it's using, I guess, this different way. But, but like I said, it's, it's not that. And I've seen it too, where I think it might depend on the actuary, because there was another city, you know, was probably about the same size as you guys, and that liability was even bigger than, than what you had. But then they had also a hospital, and that hospital had many more employees. But then their liability was pretty minor compared to the city. And so I think it's just, basically, just, like I said, an actuary calculation that, that it's, I don't, I don't want to say like a made-up number or anything, but it's, it's nothing, like I said, that it's.
You can say that.
Yes.
No, yeah, I understand. So, so it would never be anything that you would generate a finding around?
No, 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 because it's, it's one big estimate, too, that, that you guys hired an actuary to determine what the liability is, and they gave us the, their report, and then, yeah, we went with what was the report, because they were a reputable actuary firm. And because of that, because of this new standard, we actually didn't even get that report until midway through December. So like, we saw that too with many of our clients, that it was just late on getting that report, and that's why we're actually presenting this today versus in January, like we normally do, is because, because everything just got delayed because of this, this new standard.
There was a big trend where we started to see government accounting being forced to be audited, similar to your private corporate accounting, is that they're trying to merge to into the same style of audit, which is impossible, because they're not ran the same instance. It wasn't that many years ago when we were at Gatsby thirty-four, and that was the incoming of the earth. It was one of the worst things you had to go through from an accounting standpoint. Now we're at Gatsby seventy-seven in this one. I mean, that's how often these are turning around. More things to regulate, more things to audit, more money for us to spend to get accountants and to get actuaries and firms to hire, just so we can show this number that, again, does not affect cash flow. It does not affect, it's theoretical at best. But we are required to do this, and each and every year, I guarantee it will become more and more and more, as they continue to create new standards they believe we should be held to and audited for. But a lot of this was done in the private sector, I believe.
Yeah.
Before it ever got to the government sector. They're just trying to funnel it all to a similar style audit. That's not really possible, but still trying. So Gatsby seventy-seven and seventy-eight's coming out, and just keeps going. So you'll continue to see more and more of this every year.
Because I believe thirty-four came out in the early two thousands, like around around two thousand and four. So if you're at, you have to be thirty-four in two thousand and four, and now you're at seventy-eight, that just, you know, that's fourteen, fourteen years.
It's a lot of Gaspys.
Yeah. So, sorry. Next page, then, would be page eighty-four. And I said that, basically, this is just the start of the non-major funds that I mentioned earlier, that all, all the funds are shown somewhere, and this is just where all those other small funds are shown. And starting on page ninety-seven, this is where the statistical section starts. So I would, like I said earlier, management discussion analysis. And then second place, I would read, if you didn't have much time, would be the statistics, because it kind of, it shows a trend rate. You can kind of, since there's ten, ten years of, of information. Within this statistical section, on page one fifteen and one sixteen, shows the debt limit of the city. In, for twenty eighteen, that you guys are using approximately fifty-two percent of the debt limit. The debt limit is set by the assessed valuation of the city, and five percent of that, you can't exceed five percent of the assessed valuation. And so you guys are right at roughly, you know, fifty percent, which, which, like I said, I've seen less, I've seen more. There's some cities that are hovering right around that eighty percent of their debt limit. So you guys still have plenty of, of debt capacity Then on page one twenty-eight is our internal control report, that we don't issue an opinion on this, but we have to gain an understanding of the city's internal control. And then on page one thirty is the schedule findings. We had two different findings. We had a report, or we had to make our proposed material adjusting journal entries, that this really isn't that big of a deal, that if you have one journal entry, we have to issue this finding. And our firm has roughly a hundred audits, and I would say ninety percent of our clients have this finding, because nobody is perfect. And honestly, the ones that we don't find a journal entry, it's probably because we, you know, not that we didn't miss it, but we just didn't find it, you know, that, because we can't, we can't look at everything. So but then the second finding is dealing with utility accounts receivable, and we didn't find anything wrong with it. It's just, basically, the, we've found some internal control procedures that probably should be implemented to kind of tighten up the ship, some, some review procedures on, on adjustments. And now Waverly Utilities is, is in charge of doing all the billing. And so this has kind of become more, or become less of a concern, but I know I've been in contact with Jenny over there, and we're going to kind of get some, just some control procedures in place to, to just, like I said, just tighten up the ship. But otherwise, there's nothing, nothing to be concerned about. Always, I think that's about it. Does anybody have any questions?
You said on the debt capacity, going back to that for a minute, that, you know, we're, you know, we're not anywhere near our capacity, and so that's looking good. What about the, do you have any, not, how should I say, not an auditor's opinion in that sense, but I guess from what you're seeing in other places in terms of the trend line? I mean, is that, is that common?
You know, I would say that's, you're probably right, right with other cities, that, like I said, that want to mention that it's probably, you know, eighty percent, that I would say is one of the outliers. I would say anywhere between forty to fifty percent is at least pretty common to what I've seen.
And over time, are you seeing that, you know, like ours is, I mean, not, not, not rapidly, but, you know, ours is on a trend line, an increasing trend line? Is that common?
I guess it all, all depends.
Depends on the project?
Yeah, yeah. Because, like I said, it's, it could just be timing, too, because if you have one big project, well, maybe, maybe it was being kicked down the road, you know, when the economy was bad, and so then all of a sudden, well, now it's picking up, so might as well, you know, get that project, project done. But you can see for, for the city here, going all the way back to two thousand and nine, looks like the smallest would have been two thousand, no, okay, two thousand and fourteen, you're at thirty-three percent, but then the very next year, it's at seventy-two. So I'm guessing there must have been some, some big project.
Yeah.
And that's always a snapshot in time, as we said.
Sure.
You know, that's why when we talk about fiscal year, if you cross that magic date, you have a whole different set of figures. So on that fifty-two percent, we issued over eleven million dollars of Parkway months after that.
Yeah.
Except fifty-two percent went significantly higher. And so when we talk during budget, we always look at that fiscal year as a whole, not the snapshot in time.
Yeah.
But we always try to be cognizant of when that June first date, which is when your principal payments are made. And you think after that, now it's a lot less, and the percentage is different than it would have been twenty-four hours earlier on, you may thirty-first. So it is a snapshot in time. We are managing our debt. But when you have cities that are growing, and infrastructure is a key component of it, you will see a much higher trend going forward in infrastructure, and then it will tail off. And you can see how we've cycled the last ten years in that same instance. And again, Dry Run Creek was the big decider in two thousand and fifteen that jumped it then. And then you look at next year, it may be a bit higher with the Parkway and other projects. So you will see that cycle. It's really impactful if you can look over twenty, thirty years, and you can time out exactly how infrastructure was there to grow and then subside and continue to grow.
I have a question. It might be kind of a dumb question, but in for-profit businesses, you, the primary purpose of an audit like this is to make sure that potential investors are aware of anything that might be going on in the business, and that they can make investment decisions confident that the reports that the business is putting out are correct and can be relied on. I guess I'm not exactly sure who uses this report, and other than it being a, you know, full employment proposition for auditors such as you. I mean, who uses this report? And, and is this something that is used by outside people that look at what we're doing? And I, the bottom line is, why do we do this?
Well, one, state law requires it.
Well, yeah.
But, yeah, that, and all, like, banks use, you know, for bonding and everything. So they, they require to see the audit report. Maybe, James, you can even jump in on to who else uses it.
When we do our bonds, and you'll see that in the coming months, you have what is called disclosure. We have to do disclosure every year. In fact, a lot of the things that we now get audited on and fined for, if we don't do it, are because people weren't disclosing. They were hiding their financials to make them look more attractive than they were to get better ratings from Moody's and S and P and Fitch and the other rating agencies. And so when the MSDS came out to try and catch that, and they did, everybody paid for it. So now we have additional regulations to follow because of that. So the audit itself is a large part of that disclosure. In fact, a lot of it is cut and pasted right into those documents. So anybody looking to invest in us for our bonds, this portion of the audit, a lot of the financial is exactly put into that disclosure, so they can see just how we are doing. All across the country, there's places in Chicago and the Midwest, East Coast that track our progress. Iowa's very popular for bonds. The paper is very good here. It's very solid. We don't default. And so it's very attractive, and that's why we draw the rates that we do when we go forward. But this audit, in a sense, other than by state law, is used extensively by people researching out, how are we progressing, especially your statistical piece? Over ten years, what does our trend look like? And it can affect our bond ratings. It can affect the interest we're paying. And so there's, believe it or not, quite a few people actually tracking what this looks like when it comes down to selling debt. And even if you don't sell debt in that year, you still must do the disclosure to get it to track and show how you've accomplished your financials.
Okay.
Makes sense. Thank you. Yep, absolutely.
So the audit sounds pretty positive for Waverly. Did you find any red flags that we should be aware of, do you think?
No. Like I said, the two findings that we did, did report, I wouldn't be too concerned about it, but. about, but otherwise, no, we didn't, didn't find anything that, anything concerning.
The one weakness, I think, has kind of been just about every year since I've been on, but as far as just the size of our accounting department, in fact, the size of the city, we don't have a lot of staff to be able to go back and forth and do all of the cross-checking.
And that's, that's pretty common for what we see also, that, like I said, most of our clients have that, that one finding, well, it's because they have a finance department the same size that you guys have, that, that you can't double, you know, can't double-check, triple-check to make sure that everything is, is complete and accurate, and that's why, you know, we, we perform the certain tests that we do, is to kind of look for those things.
And then I did have just a question from constituent, asking, why do we use the same firm year after year? Would it be better to, to switch firms occasionally, to have somebody else look the difference at eyes, looking at it, or is it?
We bid out our auditing services every so often. I think we have a year or so left in this contract, and then we will be bidding again. And while I do think it is advantageous to have new auditors at times, it's also nice to have somebody who's familiar with your process, you don't have to reengage everything completely, it's a much more costly audit to do it that way. But at some point in time, yes, if the cost seems to be excessive, or you're worried that the performance is not there, we would certainly step out and bid this.
Are we required then too, in the bidding process, just like with construction projects, to take the lowest one?
No, this being a professional service, you could take the best bid, not necessarily the lowest bid, because it's been part of organizations taking the low bid, and I'll be done a couple of years later, it's a lot higher than it was the year you bid it, and even past the auditors that you had. So, there is that possibility, you could take in on a very, very appealing low bid, and then in a matter of years, it's much, much higher. So we always go out with three to six-year estimates of what the fees will be, and try to lock in three at a minimum to keep that from happening.
Want to get locked in on that special deal credit card?
Absolutely. What's in your wallet?
Any other questions for?
I'm just wondering how you managed to come from Lamar's on a day when there wasn't a blizzard.
I'm very thankful it's Monday night, not Tuesday night.
Or Sunday.
Or Sunday, yes. Not Tuesday, yep.
That's usually when we can book a good blizzard.
Yeah. Sneak right in between, between the two of them.
Safe travels back.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I believe we've covered the audit. Thank you very much for your services, and look forward to one year from now, or thereabouts. Moving on, Resolution 1917, a resolution approving minor subdivision request and development agreement for property located at 1009 Bremer Road, and approving the creation of parcel O.
I will move approval of Resolution 1917, approving a minor subdivision request and development agreement for a property located at 1009 Bremer Road for the creation of parcel O.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion. Rachel, would you have some input for, for us?
It's not a great picture, but you have some attachments there. So, good evening. Tonight, I'm here to discuss the Mullis requests. I know these are two separate agenda items, however, they're kind of tied together, so I'm going to explain both of them, however, they will require separate motions and votes. So, Jason and Jade Mullis plan to tear down an existing house at 1009 Bremer Road, and their plan is to construct a new house. The applicants are requesting approval of a minor subdivision, so the parcel currently is 13.21 acres, and they are requesting to parcel off the homestead, which is proposed to be 3.02 acres. According to the city's agricultural districts, district standards, a single-family dwelling may not be constructed within one-fourth of a mile from another single-family dwelling, which is not a farm dwelling. So because of this provision, the applicant is requesting to rezone the proposed three-acre homestead to R1. The remaining land is proposed to remain agricultural, and they do propose to basically farm that this summer. And I want to talk a little bit about the development agreement, as this is one of the main topics in the planning commission meeting. So it's a, it's a planner's job to look at existing developments and understand the plan, and how they will be made better through neighborhood connectivity, major road connectivity, emergency services, et cetera. I've been lucky enough to work with the Mullis family, and explain the area and the developments surrounding their property. So, developments to the northwest, it's a little tough to see, but right here, all have access onto Cedar Lane. However, problems have arose previously with some flooding events and other issues requiring emergency services. The city did accommodate for another connection onto Horton Road through the Prairie Park Development that was occurring here. I believe the road connection was going to be up here for the rest of that. However, progress on that development has halted. The Copper Ridge Development to the south here was only planned for construction up to this property line right here, and that development has halted progress as well. So this area is designated as residential in the future land use plan, therefore, single-family home development is expected. Any further development that occurs in this area needs to come with planning of another connection out to Bremer Road. This will also help with the lack of ingress and egress with the existing developments to the northwest. So once again, the city is in a unique position, that the current applicants understand this need and are willing to enter into a development agreement stating that depending on how development occurs in this area, their property may be a good location for a public road connection out to Bremer Road. The development agreement outlines this process, stating at the time of development of the outlot, that a public road connection out to Bremer Road should be evaluated and accommodated for if needed. The planning commission did consider these requests at their February 7th meeting, and recommended approval on both items. There was a public hearing for the rezoning, and one person besides the applicant spoke at the public hearing, and they basically just stated that they were in support of the applicant's proposal. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the minor subdivision request and development agreement, with the condition of approval that the rezoning request from A1 to R1 for parcel O is approved, and staff recommends approval of the first reading of ordinance 1056, rezoning parcel O from A1 to R1, and setting the public hearing for this request for the March 4th City Council meeting. And lastly, the applicants are in the audience tonight, if the council has any questions for them.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Rachel, while she's there?
I would just like to point out that this is the issue that we're having with Cedar Lane, that we were talking about earlier, because Cedar Lane is the only egress for that, all of those developments. And, you know, having another way to get in and out of that area is really important, not only for safety, but also to, to cut down on some of the traffic on Cedar Lane. Is there any indication when that property might be developed, and that a road might be taken out to the Horton Road? I mean, not the Horton Road, the Bremer Road.
Yeah, so currently, the applicants have purchased that entire lot for, I guess, holding it for future development potentially. They're just, you know, property owners at this point, and so that's quite an undertaking for themselves. But I know that they would be interested in the future, however, currently, their plans are just to farm it for the fall, or fall, for the spring, and then construct that house on the, the homestead.
So there's no current development plans?
Correct.
You have two other parcels that would have to, one of them almost to be acquired to extend that road out, since they're the ones that stub into the neighborhood, and this one, again, would be a beneficiary of that, but does not have direct access to a stubbed road to allow it to happen?
Right.
And those are different owners?
Yep.
Now, there's at least four or five owners all within a, within about a four-block area there, and no one wants to, wants to make the move. There's also a long-range plan to come out of Impala, I believe it is, through what's known as the Rieger property, to get to the, to the Bremer Blacktop, but that's down the road ways also, so.
So there's nothing on the immediate or even near horizon of having a road going out to the Bremer Blacktop?
Correct. Usually, roads are constructed with development, and we would be waiting on that.
Yeah, okay.
I think one thing of benefit to say is that this development seems to be at a point where no development in that area is really allowed until there is an access out to Bremer Road, so we are not trying to worsen the, the problem at hand.
Was there any planning, any discussion at the, not planning and zoning, the planning commission, that was hesitant about approving this? We don't have the minutes, and it just says that they approved it unanimously, but I was wondering if there was any discussion?
So, actually, the minor subdivision and development agreement was not approved unanimously, there was one vote, no, and then the rezoning was approved unanimously. There is a large discussion on the development agreement, and why the city should make such an agreement to accommodate for a road where we don't know where it'll go for sure. And I think the discussion surrounding that is, we try to go through the path of least resistance, we know that a road is needed, and if a property owner is willing to work with us, where potentially the area road is, is deemed necessary, we'd like to do so. That's also a reason that we did not do an easement, and we just did a development agreement, because these pieces are about 10 acres each, which is relatively small for a developer to take, so we could see that going, you know, two to three pieces at a time, and at that time, maybe a road connection is put a little bit south of this parcel, or a little bit north, so it should be evaluated at that time.
So the no, the no vote would have actually been contrary to what Rod is concerned about. I mean, the, the no vote would not have been in favor of?
The development agreement?
Yes.
Correct. That, so yes, that was the, the main discussion, the planning commission, and once again, I've heard no comments from the notices sent out, and there was one person who spoke at the public hearing, who is just north of the property, who is in favor of this.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. Any other discussion from the council? The parcel O would use the existing driveway off of, off of Bremer Road, so. Pro call vote, please.
Cangis?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Bostick?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Resolution 1917, approving the minor subdivision request for property located at 1009 Bremer Road is, is approved. First reading of ordinance 1056, an ordinance providing for rezoning of property owned by Ernest and Teresa Mullis, and Jason and Jade Mullis, Mullis located at 1009 Bremer Road from A1 agricultural to R1 single-family residential, and set a public hearing. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the first reading of ordinance 1056, an ordinance providing for rezoning of property owned by Ernest and Teresa Mullis, and Jason and Jade Mullis, located at 1009 Bremer Road, from A1 agricultural to R1 single-family residential, and setting March 4th, 2019, at 7:00 PM, in the council chambers of City Hall, as the date, time, and place for a public hearing.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion. Rachel explained the companion to this quite well. Pro call vote, please.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Bostick?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Cangis?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance 1056, providing rezoning of property owned by the Mullises at 1009 is approved, public hearing is set for March 4th. Resolution 1918, approving contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance from Kramer and Associates Incorporated for the Adams Parkway Bridge Repair 2019 project, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. Entertain a motion.
I'll move the motion as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion. Everything's in order, Mike?
Yes.
Pro call vote, please.
Rothie?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Bostick?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Cangis?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Resolution 1918, approving contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance from Kramer and Associates Incorporated for the Adams Parkway Bridge Repair 2019 is approved. Resolution 1919, approving amendment number one to the professional services agreement dated June 18th, 2018, for the Adams Bridge Parkway, Adams Parkway Bridge Repair and Horton Road Improvements 2019 project. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 19-19, approving amendment number one to the professional services agreement dated June 18th, 2018, for the Adams Parkway Bridge Repair and Horton Road Improvements 2019 project, for the not-to-exceed amount of $48,410, including expenses.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion.
I think it's just a question. We had talked about the Horton Ru, Horton Road improvement part of this, and decided not to fund that with this budget, so should that be mentioned in this resolution? I noticed in some of the supporting documents, it was striked through, I'm just wondering, so we don't confuse things, should we strike it from the resolution also?
Trying to see where it's at in the resolution.
It's mainly just in the title of the?
Yeah, it's, I don't see in the actual documents, just the title itself. Is it down? Do you want to look here?
Yeah. It's in the resolution paragraph.
Yep, I get it. It's in the resolution also, Adam Parkway Bridge Repair and Horton Road Improvement, so.
In the memo?
Yep, just reading through quick. Yeah, we can strike that, I don't see any issue to you, Mike, I mean, we're not doing that project necessarily, and I don't think we're engineering it with this.
Well, the amendment is to the professional services agreement, and the way it's titled in there is, is Am's Parkway Bridge Repair and Horton Road Improvements. Effectively, we've, we've, you know, delayed or rejected the Horton Road portion of it, but it is still the official title of the?
Okay, that makes sense. Okay. I see what you're saying.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Pro call vote, please.
Sharon?
Yes.
Bostick?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Cangis?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Resolution 1919, approving amendment number one to the professional services agreement for the Adams Parkway Bridge Repair is approved. Resolution 1920, awarding contract to Mott Construction of Sumner, Iowa, for the exchange building renovation for the South Riverside Park Renovation Improvement Project Phase One. Entertain a motion.
I'll move Resolution 19-20, awarding contract with Mott Construction of Sumner, Iowa, for the exchange building renovation for the South Riverside Park Renovation Improvement Project. project, Phase One, for the bid amount of $105,500.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion.
Deb? Go ahead. Oh, go ahead. Did you want to say something?
Deb, do you have any input?
I'm open to questions.
This will still fall into this year's budget?
Yes. We should be able to get done. The contract says, I think, June 4 or June 5.
Okay.
Any other questions? Pro call vote, please.
Walzheim?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Share?
Yes.
Resolution 1920, awarding the contract to Mott Construction of Sumner, Iowa for the renovation of South Riverside Park building is approved. Resolution 1921, approving contract with ATC Group Services LLC of Waterloo, Iowa for a transaction screen environmental site assessment for the Waverly Municipal Airport Safety Zone Expansion Project. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of resolution 19-21, approving contract with ATC Group Service LLC of Waterloo, Iowa for a transaction screen environmental site assessment for the Waverly Municipal Airport Safety Zone Expansion Project for the amount of $1,000,400.
Did that comment in the right spot?
We just throw money around here.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion.
So what is it?
It looks like it's a necessary screen that has to be...
What happened when the appraisals came in, they mentioned that there was a potential business that had been operated on the property involving engines. And so the FAA said, oops, we need to see if we can screen this. They're not going to actually examine or do any testing. They're just going to look at pictures and identify whether there's a potential for any hazards. Generally, they do these simple ones, and then if there's any questions raised by the person doing the assessment, then they would actually go to another assessment.
So this would be an environmental screen, like if there were some kind of...
Oil, just oil.
Some toxic...
So they could tell that by taking a picture?
No, they really look at, they just talk about who's owned it, how long they've owned it, what kind of businesses they've done there, and they basically do more of a, you call it a transaction screen, it's just kind of identifying who's been using it for what purpose over how many periods, years.
So it's somehow kind of a risk assessment, and if it seems risky, they'll come back and do a more detailed report, and otherwise they'll just say it looks good enough?
Yes.
I think it's a good way to explain it.
Yes, because it's really, I mean, it's the FAA, and they said this is a simple process that somebody says, I don't think there's any problems here. Then we just go forward with it.
So we are getting closer with that last piece of property.
Yes, we're going through all the steps. There's a relocation process is being done within the next week or two, and they'll make a relocation offer, which basically has additional funds that can be offered in addition to the appraised value. And then we'll be coming back at some point, and after we've made an effort to do more negotiation, then we can come back with proceeding beyond that if we can't make a deal.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion, questions? Pro call vote, please.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Share?
Yes.
Walzheim?
Yes.
Resolution 1921, approving the contract with ATC Group Service LLC of Waterloo for transaction screen assessment is approved. Resolution 1922, approving the City of Waverly's service animal policy. Entertain a motion.
I approve the resolution 1922, approving the City of Waverly's service animal policy.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion. Yes, sir. Gentlemen, come up to the mic if you would, please.
Hi, guys. I'm Scott Dewey, and this is Chad. We both work out at Retrieving Freedom. We got a chance to read it today, and it looked great. I think it's a really good idea for the city to follow what the state's doing. Our question in the reading of that resolution is it doesn't mention the same thing as the state of Iowa does, which Chad has here in...
Code 216-C11.
It's more ineffective, the dogs in training to become service dogs, or somebody assisting a disabled person with a service dog. I don't know if you need to read it for sure or not, Chad, but at the end of the day, certain states make different rules as to whether you can have a dog in training in public, and pretty much all states have adopted it. And in the wording of the resolution, we didn't see anywhere where it stated dogs in training or somebody assisting the person with a disability helping with the dog.
So you're saying the assumption would be that the dog or the horse, pony, or whatever it is that's mentioned in here is fully trained, and what you're saying is that one in training should also be allowed?
Correct.
I think it'd be a good idea to add that in there. We've trained staff to include dogs in training or animals in training, but I think it'd be a good idea to have the wording in there. That's probably a good catch.
I would agree with that.
I would certainly agree with that.
Could just have a sentence that says it all applies to dogs in training, like staying out of the pool and that sort of thing.
Can we do that just by amendment, the resolution here, so we don't have to redo?
Can the last sentence be changed with, it says unless they are a service animal or a service animal in training? And add that phrase?
Yeah.
Here, let me, I'll pull this up and show you.
I think that would absolutely cover it. This one spells it out a little bit more, but it just says, person with a disability, a person assisting a person with a disability, or a person training a service dog. But if you listed it like that, nobody's going to argue that.
After service animal put, or a service animal in training?
I think our whole goal here is to educate the people in town the best, and especially with the situation that potentially happened at the pool, it'd be great if they knew that they could be in the same boat.
Along that line of education, can you explain the difference between how you would identify a service dog versus a therapy emotional support animal?
It's kind of spelled out in there with the questions that you can ask. I mean, at the end of the day, a service dog, I'm not going to speak on service miniature horses, but the service dog has to be trained to do a task to mitigate a disability. That truly is what makes a service dog.
Did somebody accreditate that, or...
I really wish they could, yes. And I think it's going that way. I mean, Retrieving Freedom now is accredited with Assistance Dogs International, which is probably the largest accreditation force internationally. And each year, we get closer and closer to that goal of being able to register and document who officially has a service dog. I mean, I don't know if you guys saw earlier, probably was mid-year last year, Iowa passed a new legislation making it illegal, you know, and now it's convictable to go into public with a fake service dog. The trouble is, is that it's hard to tell and hold them accountable. So ultimately, you have to, I mean, you should just flat out ask them, is that a service dog? And the answer has to be yes, right? If they say no, it's not a service dog. And an emotional support dog and a therapy dog are not service dogs.
The difference, Dan, I don't think, I mean, I'm not an attorney, Bill, you might know better than I, but I think, I don't think the emotional support animal would be relevant to us as a city because that is actually a law that comes out of HUD. It has to do with housing, and the service dogs have to do with ADA. So they're two separate laws from two separate agencies. So at the college, for example, this is where I'm familiar with it from, we have to honor both because the students are living there, and that falls under HUD, okay? Whereas a service animal is for anyone with a disability anywhere.
An emotional support dog does not have public access.
So even at the hospital, we're dealing with this and looking at just this policy of doing service animals rather than emotional support animals.
Thank you, guys.
Just out of curiosity, Scott, how many dogs have you put out with people?
So we're in the high 70s now for dogs that are placed with the public access, and that's where I ended up, 58% placement, so there's about 60 to 70-some that didn't make it, that were also placed in hospitals and had other working roles other than public access. And we have 65 in training right now.
About 65 to 70 in training.
Wow.
That's great.
Great, very good, thank you.
So, Bill, where were you going to add that, which line?
The last sentence, after service animal or service animal in training?
Or part of a city-sponsored program for the public. So it'd just be inserting the or service animal in training.
Talking to third whereas?
No, the very...
The page after the actual policy. Third page, the service animal policy. At the last paragraph where it says in general, and then where it says unless they're a service animal, we would change that to unless they're a service animal or a service animal in training.
Gotcha.
Would we also want to change that in the actual resolution, the third whereas? Also...
I think the resolution just adopts the policy.
Yeah, I'm not sure it needs to be in the resolution.
So if we change the policy that you're approving, I think it works.
Yeah, because the resolution's actually that last now therefore resolved, we're adopting the policy. And the policy says there's service animals in training.
Just a tiny little language fix, the last whereas concludes with the word and. I think the and is superfluous. You should probably take that out. Am I right?
Before the now.
Before the now. Get rid of the and.
It works either way.
I trust the journalist.
Thanks.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Apparently I didn't need any help tonight, or... I'll formally add that as an amendment, so...
Oh, yeah, we need to do that. So can that just be done through?
I'll just add friendly amendment to my motion. My second agrees.
Second agree?
Who's that?
Me?
Walzheim?
Walzheim.
Oh, that was me? Sure, I agree, yes, sorry.
Okay, pro call vote on the resolution 1922, Waverly service animal policy as amended.
Drankow?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Share?
Yes.
Walzheim?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Resolution 1922, approving the City of Waverly service animal policy approved. Resolution 1923, a resolution setting dates for the consultation and the public hearing on a proposed amendment number four to the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan in the City of Waverly, State of Iowa. Entertain a motion.
I'll move resolution 19-23, setting March 1, 2019 at 8:00 a.m. in the office of the city attorney at City Hall as the date, time, and place for the consultation with taxing authorities, and setting March 18, 2019 at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers of City Hall as the date, time, and place for a public hearing on a proposed amendment number four to the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan in the City of Waverly, State of Iowa.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion. Questions?
So I have one question, probably not especially related, but questions have been asked me a couple of times. So the area that's included on the urban renewal map includes the block on Bremer Avenue, Fourth Street Southwest. So this includes the block where the, I believe it's the Veterans Memorial is, you've got the Virginia Apartments, I think the Wash House is on that block, is kind of across the street from the Historical Society Museum. I believe that's kind of the last block that's included on there.
I don't believe it is.
Am I wrong there?
It's not green.
Farther south.
I thought that was one of the yellow ones.
There's a yellow one that's...
Oh, that's exiting?
The old Bon and Rose.
No, so I'm looking...
Okay. No, you could be right, that's the down to...
It's kind of this yellow area here.
Yep, you're right. I couldn't see it on mine, but I could see it on his yellow one.
Okay, so I don't know if that's existing, okay. So on that block, there is an empty plot of land, I believe it's owned by Carmy Flavors. This is the one kind of between, or Carmy family, this is between the Virginia Apartments. What's going on with that property? Do we have any sense of...
Nothing.
Okay, so that's in the TIF renewal, so it's kind of...
It's in their urban renewal plan.
Urban renewal plan.
But it's no longer creating increment. It's been in there for 20 years.
Okay.
So if we were to do anything with that, we would have to take it out.
Take it out, put it back in?
Yeah. Because it's not been developed over 20, in the last 20 years.
Well, it had a building on it until flood, it was flood buyout.
Right. So it was, it may have been generating the increment for 20 years, but I don't know what the increment had been generated.
People have asked me, there's a big empty lot there, kind of up Bremer Avenue, why?
We keep asking him if he wants to list it with our office and show it for sale. Generally, when people ask, we say he does own it, that Carmy owns it, and that they can contact him, and we try to give the contact information if anybody's interested in the lot. But it's not being actively listed for sale.
Okay, thank you.
And so, Bill, I just have a question about the process. Do you typically talk to the owners of these properties and see if they're thinking about developing and then put them in, or how does that...
Generally, yes, unless they're adjacent to other properties, and they may be potentially redevelopable. So if you have a property that's adjacent to one that's definitely going to be redeveloped, and there's a potential for that property to be acquired, we go ahead and do it because it doesn't hurt anything, we're not changing anything, they still can own it and not do any development on it. So that's why the properties on the west side of Fourth at 13th, the residential property that's on the south end, the north of that property that's for sale, we include that because that may be acquired at some point, and rather have to go back and do it another time. We do it now.
And so do you talk to the property owner about that?
Not generally for those property owners because it really doesn't affect their property because it's not anything that can be forced on them. We're not going to put...
You're sort of speculating about what might happen to their property in the next 20 years.
Well, I mean, we sort of have some information that it's potentially, it could go that way within a fairly short period of time, not necessarily real short, like five to 10 years or less. But again, it's one of those situations where we make a judgment so we don't have to make this, do another amendment at some point. We already, I think we do enough right now, and hopefully we're going to slow down after this. But having to do this every year, I'd rather not do more than one a year if we have a potential development possibility with the properties. Both those two residential properties have some backstories, so we could talk about them another time.
Other questions, comments, discussion? Pro call vote, please.
Just looking at it, it looks like most of the public golf course is in it, but not all of it. Looks like the two new holes that would be the west part there don't look like they're in that portion. That makes a difference to anything or not, it just... When we did 10th Avenue, the golf course was put in, and then we had some major drainage work on the golf course. At that time, the two wasn't there. Curious.
I think everything east of the railroad tracks is in there.
Right. Right. It's just the, those two new holes that are... Did you go west of?
Are they west of the railroad tracks?
No, I've shot many a ball from those new ones onto the railroad tracks, so I'm pretty sure they're on this side still.
Everyone comfortable?
Seems like the line goes differently there.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Cengis?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Share?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Resolution 1923, setting dates of consultation and a public hearing on a proposed amendment number four to the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan is carried. Resolution 1924, approving an engagement agreement between the City of Waverly and Allers and Cooney, PC, in its capacity as bond counsel in connection with the issuance of not-to-exceed $3,700,000 general obligation bond, Series 2019. Entertained a motion.
I'll move Resolution 19-24, as read by the mayor. Second.
Ms. Maiden, second. Council discussion. Any input, James?
Yeah, briefly, we have to do these agreements now. As I mentioned before, when people mess around and do things they shouldn't, these are the things that come out of it. So instead of us all holding hands and going and saying, "Well, you know, we're going to trust each other. You're going to do your job. We're going to do our job." Now they spell out exactly what that job is and exactly what we will do as well, so there's no misunderstanding. There's no coming back later. It didn't go so well. Now we're going to see you. Those are the things that happen. I always premise it, it's usually on the coasts, east and west. That's where stuff gets weird, and we all are responsible for it. And that's kind of what happened with some of this, too. So now we have engagement agreements on everything that we do, with Spear, with Allers, everybody. And that's even the audit, because of those situations. So that's what this is, is outlining both parties' responsibilities.
Other questions, discussion?
So you think there's something in the water out on the coasts?
I don't know. Maybe it's the global warming, the ocean. I'm not sure, Mike, but I know it's not usually happening here, so... I'm looking forward to getting engaged. I didn't create the terminology. We just put it out there for you to know.
Is that how you spell "bond counsel", with a C, two Cs?
Oh, council?
I think council should be...
It's British.
An S, right?
That's French, I think.
That, we'll have to correct that typo. Thank you for catching that.
It's in there two or three times, so...
Promotes the accent. It makes it sound much more glamorous.
I think we better have roll call vote. Things are getting goofy.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Share?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Cengis?
Yes.
Resolution 1924, approving an engagement agreement between the City of Waverly and Allers and Cooney, PC, is approved. Resolution 1925, a resolution fixing date for meeting on the proposition of issuance of not-to-exceed $100,000 general obligation bonds of the City of Waverly, State of Iowa, for general corporate purposes and providing for publication of notice thereof. Entertained a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 1925, a resolution fixing date for a meeting on the proposition of the issuance of not-to-exceed $100,000 general obligation bonds of the City of Waverly, State of Iowa, for general corporate purposes and providing for publication of notice thereof for March 4, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers.
Second.
Ms. Maiden, second. Council discussion.
What's the difference between a general corporate purpose and an essential corporate purpose?
I'll explain that for you. A lot of it has to do with when you do the advertisement for it. One is a 10 and 20, one is a 4 and 20. What I mean by that is, one, you have to advertise for the hearing at least 10 days, no more than 20 days, or at least four days, no more than 20 days. So there's only certain things you can actually borrow for. You think it'd be much easier, but there's a whole code section on it. And so there's only certain things you can borrow for in certain manners. And so those limitations, when we send this to the bond attorneys, they will go through and make sure that each item falls within one or two categories. And if they don't all fall within one, you have a secondary one to go at. And that's what this is here. The facade grant, that is what the $100,000 would cover, the 75 plus any additional fees as a not-to-exceed. Everything else fell into the next item, which is the 3.6 million. So that's part of what we pay them to do, is make sure that we legally are bonding accordingly, and we advertise correctly in the right timeframe, so the documentations are prepared, you know, in the manner they need to be to satisfy the federal law on this. So that is kind of the difference. If you look at the code section, it'll explain what's corporate, what's essential, and depending on which one it is, depending on what kind of hearing you get, now you have to publish. So again, somebody screwed something somewhere, and now we got to do this, so...
I'm sorry I asked.
It's complicated. These guys, you pay a bit of money for this.
So when the bonds are sold, they'll be sold as one?
Yep.
So the pricing will be...
That's the question I had. Yes. We have to separate them for hearing only, but the actual sale is one combined amount total. But for hearings, to be properly done, they have to split them out and segregate them like that.
Other questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Rothie?
Yes.
Share?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Cengis?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Resolution 1925, fixing date for a meeting on the proposition issuance of not-to-exceed $100,000 GO bonds, public hearing for March 4 is approved. Resolution 1926, a resolution fixing date for a meeting on the proposition of the issuance of not-to-exceed $3,600,000 general obligation bonds of the City of Waverly, State of Iowa, for essential corporate purposes and providing for publication of notice thereof.
I will move approval of Resolution 1926, a resolution fixing date for a meeting on the proportion, on the proposition of the issuance of not-to-exceed $3,600,000 general obligation bonds of the City of Waverly, State of Iowa, for essential corporate purposes and providing for publication of notice thereof for a public hearing on March 4, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers of City Hall.
Second.
Ms. Maiden, second. Council discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Share?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Cengis?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Resolution 1926, fixing date for public hearing on the issuance of $3,600,000 GO bonds is approved. Reports from boards and commissions. Historic Preservation Commission, November 26, 2018, received in the record. Monthly financials for January 2019.
I have a question about that. So I was looking on page six of the monthly financials, and I see the snow removal total. And, I mean, the budget amount seems to be 1,300. The amount spent, I guess the year-to-date total is on the order of $29,000. So we're approximately 2,284% expended. I'd just like a little bit more details about how the snow removal is paid for and budgeted. And in a year like this, where it seems like we're doing a lot of snow removal, how does that come out in the budgeting?
The snow removal does not equate to overtime. So it could be during the middle of the day, a normal workday, and they're coding it to snow removal. So it's just a method of tracking how much effort from year to year is going towards that purpose.
So do we actually budget for snow removal? Or is that just part of the regular city costs?
In the road use tax, it's not a separate line item.
Okay.
We budget for staffing and materials. But as far as how it's, why they track it, I don't know, unless it's a road use tax reporting requirement.
It is.
So that's why we track.
But it doesn't have to actually match up with anything?
So this is just making sure that that dollar amount can be used from the road use tax and doesn't come from other places? And the actual budgeting amount is kind of unnecessary? I mean, we, of course, we do as much snow removal as we have to. I mean, it's based on the amount of snow we get.
Yeah, I think, you know, as Jenny indicated, it's part of our road use tax reporting requirement. And so any activities associated with the snow removal is coded that way. Again, it is no reflection on whether we're within budget or over budget, simply tracked by the state to determine how much effort is being put forward by communities and counties.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments about monthly financials? Received in the record. Cable commission minutes from January 21, 2019.
I had a question about that. It looks like they're trying to decide whether they need to continue to meet. Is that what they mean in their minutes?
Tab, is that fall under yours?
Carlo's there. Yeah, it's more they've met a couple of times since, you know, in the last two years.
I think a lot of it's topic-driven. And you get to the upgrades that were being talked about. That was kind of why it reconvened to the extent. But now that that's been satisfied, a lot of it, there is kind of the whole, do we continue to meet every month just to meet, or do we probably do it as need be? I think that's what the discussion was.
It's scheduled on and as needed.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
And generally, because that they've met twice.
I wasn't sure if it meant to dissolve the committee or just meet when they needed to.
No, I think it's more of an as-needed going forward. So the discussion's probably, when would we meet the next time? Is there anything pending that we'd have to look at? So that's my take from that.
Okay. Received in the record. Senior calendar, February 2019. Received in the record. Staff comments?
Very quickly, I think the mayor would like to know if the media com watchers are able to see the council better this time, because we had a media com rep work on the equipment last week. So everybody call the mayor, so that, tell him that it's working or not.
I'll expect those calls if it's not, and one way or the other. And Tab will have a discussion if my phone blows up.
Anything else, staff? I think it's all we have, sir.
Okay, did you have anything to do with budget that you wanted?
I had a little bit of it, yeah. It was pretty good overall. We were glad to be done, for the most part. We'll get that to the papers. Is it next week?
Today?
Geez. It's going to be today. So as we said, you know, we started out with a levy rate much, much higher than we finished. Bill and I will be going to the Capitol tomorrow to be disappointed by our legislators again. And we'll talk to them as much as we can, and we'll see what they say. And we're not expecting a lot, because they're so focused on such important issues that I won't get into from the other topics. It's going to be a fun trip.
I'll do something with you before you get there.
You should probably come down with us and keep us in line. It's going to be a fun trip. But no, we'll be with Preakes Cities tomorrow at the Capitol, talking through some of the issues that may impact the budget, specifically backfill, if we can get a word in on that, and then some of the other smaller topics we've talked about. But overall, March 4, of course, we've announced will be the hearing for the budget. We're to 1437 change right in there, so less than prior year's levy, which, with the increase and rollback, we were hoping to be able to do that. Glad that was able to be accomplished. And I think we can go back through and look at all that's in that budget. It's substantial. There is a lot bid off this year to get done, from a construction standpoint, to procedurally issues that have come up. And I think it's going to be a very heavy, but a very productive year. So I guess if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them from council, but that's kind of what I would have for comments.
So James, remind us when, what's the deadline for filing the budget with the state?
March 15. Have to have a hearing and have it finalized and sent to the state in their own special documents that they want it done in. And that's different from anything we do internally, so the crossover is also pleasant. And that's just us, schools and counties. Everybody has to do it in the state's special format electronically, which has always been a bone of contention for us. And we're going to talk about that tomorrow, too, hopefully. We used to send things in by paper, and they decided we didn't like that. We want to do it electronically. Yet we can't do things electronically and or locally. We still have to do it by paper. So I'm not sure why they disconnect, but that's just another example of how they make us do things that really don't always make sense to us. So, but we'll talk about that tomorrow if we can as well. But otherwise, it'll be in the paper this week. paper this week, and we'll see what the hearing looks like on the 4th, and then July 1, it all kicks off, and the budget will approve, whatever it ends up being on March 4, will kick in, so a lot of activity.
Okay, any other questions, comments for the staff? Council comments?
So at the end of our last meeting, when we were talking about the budgeting, one of the things that came up was we were discussing the Third Street Bridge, and I wasn't clear if we were going to request that the historical designation be removed or not.
Yeah, I thought we were pretty sure that we were.
But if we're going to remove that, I think we should do it by resolution. I think there should actually be a vote on that rather than just going through and saying we're going to do that. I think that the removal of that is worth having kind of a record of us removing that designation.
We can certainly do that.
And I'm going to be at the par house afterwards if anyone wants to join.
I just want you all to know that I'm wearing orange tonight in recognition of the Fort Bridge Women's Basketball Team winning their championship last week, and if they can get back in...
Winning the division.
Conference.
The conference.
The conference, right. And if they can get into the final form, four in the NCAA, we'll all be very excited.
Good.
Yeah, congratulations to the Waverly Shaw Rock Wrestling Team, so both the boys and the girls, state champions. That's great.
Just a quick comment on snow. Again, I think if you look at what city staff have been doing, they probably haven't had a day off in quite a while, and they deserve a lot of credit for keeping us able to move around town fairly quickly, and I know Mike and I always share the comment of adopt your fire hydrants, make sure you clear those out, as well as your storm drain impacts and those type of things, so in case the snow ever decides to fall sometime, you have a place to go. So driving around town, there are a lot of fire hydrants you can find, so.
On that line, I know Mike had a chart, I don't remember if it was last year, he's presented it before, where it kind of showed the, the snowfall amounts of certain amounts, and just kind of show that, how unusual a year this year is in terms of the larger snowfalls that we've gotten.
Well, so far, I think we've only had one major snowfall event over six inches.
Is that what it was?
I think we've had two, but...
Seems more because it accumulates over several days.
Sometimes they fall just under that six-inch category, but we, we update that chart yearly, so.
Maybe look at that in July when we're complaining.
Well, when you're shoveling out your driveway and there's nowhere to put that snow except in the same place, seems like a lot. I have snow in my front yard that is almost as tall as I am. I'm not the tallest guy in the room, but that's a lot of snow.
The problem is when you're shoveling the same three inches five times just to get to the end, it seems like a whole lot.
Along those lines, my daughter in Des Moines calculated what a cubic foot of snow weighed and how much she had in her driveway and on her sidewalk, and I think, if I remember the figure right, it was somewhere around 8,000 pounds, so that she shoveled by Any other council comments? I have just kudos to the city staff on the snow removal. Dr. Brian briefly this morning, and then I think he said they were out at 2 o'clock, 1 o'clock, something like that this morning to start cleaning up and things, and it looks pretty good. Had a privilege last week of welcoming Chief Purcell's Police Academy class. Hopefully it went well. They didn't stay for all of it, but they had a good, good cross-section of residents there, and we'll look forward to seeing them all. Hopefully none of them dropped out after the first meeting. Not yet. Back to snow removal, a couple of places I've driven around, residents are blowing the snow from their driveways back out into the street. It's not only hazardous to everybody else, but it's also illegal, so if someone's watching, maybe they might make a change in their habits, and I think that's really all that I have. Thanks, everyone, for everything. Good to have James back in the office. I know he had a busy day, and it's probably going to be a few more like this.
That's why he's leaving tomorrow.
Yeah. I'd rather be here.
Entertained a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Maiden, second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
For adjourn.